City Council meeting. It's called the order. A roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Poe Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott, excused. Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a call.
Do we have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open up the public hearing for the proposed City of Inksley budget and water sewer rates for the fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
We're probably moving to second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Passed. Public hearing is now open. Members of the public can make comments now regarding the proposed budget for 2024, 2025, and the water and sewer rates also for the same time period. Just to give everybody a backdrop, we did receive preliminary audit financials yesterday. And from last year's FY23 budget, 2324, and the deficit we have is $624,000. And the fund balance is in a negative $348,000. Just to give everybody an idea of what we're dealing with going forward. So anybody would like to make any comments with respect to the proposed budget for this coming fiscal year? Come on up.
I'm just one during. I think the last time, weren't we supposed to get a copy?
We're talking.
I just received it. So I can go and take a copy?
We just received the revisions, the old one was there. We did make some revisions.
Okay, and could you repeat those figures again?
Sure. The projected FY23 deficit is $624,000. And the June 30th, 23 fund balance is negative $348,000. So now we're moving forward, working on the audit. I think we're in a better situation to state, changed our due date regarding our bonds. Am I right there? So we have an extra two weeks. 10 days. Three weeks. Okay, which gives us a little breathing room with respect to getting the audit complete, which is great. Unfortunately, the auditor is going on vacation. Okay, we may have it done tomorrow, this outside chance. If not, it will be when she gets back, July 15th, 16th?
Maybe.
15.
Okay.
Just to give us an idea of where we're at.
Okay, and the other one is that now that the audit has been completed, and the state will be able to release some of the funds they've been holding, how will that impact the budget that you're presenting now? You all aren't prepared to vote on it tonight, are you, on the budget?
We have to, per charter.
Alright, per charter, you have to vote on it tonight. So we don't know how, whatever we get from them will impact what you're presenting to us.
Yeah, I want to come on up and answer a question.
So to Ms. Watley's question, she was asking about the, there are certain funds that the state has held on to because the audit has not been filed. That is really more of a cash flow thing. And when we talk about funds that have been held, we're talking about revenue sharing. Some of the road funds, Act 51 funds, those are primarily going to be cash flow issues because we'll still get the money. Once we file the audit, we should get the money as long as the money's received by the end of August. We should have those, those funds would be part of the FY24 budget. Now, what's, in addition to that, are, we have a number of reimbursements that we're been working on. Mrs. Crutchfield has been, you know, working diligently on that. And we expect to start collecting those at some point after July 1st. Some of those are coming from the state, some will be coming from the federal government. But we did try to incorporate that into the FY24 budget in terms of those revenues coming in as best we could.
So they're already included?
We did, we did take that into consideration. The revenue reimbursements, the other ones really will not have a material effect because we expect those to be released sometime in July. Once we file the audit, the state usually releases those funds in a matter of days or, you know, a couple of weeks.
I know, I know I saw one, but it's not in front of us now, so we're not actually know what you all have and haven't done.
Well, we did have a printout. Did anybody print the changes? We can at least read off the changes we made to, everything else is the same.
Okay.
What we made, it was about, here, you understand? Why don't you read the changes, since everybody understands what we did?
So we are required, we are required to keep a copy of the mayor's recommended budget on file. That had been on file. We did put the water rates and the millage rates have also been, when I say on file, they're available at the clerk's office. But we did make a few changes as the mayor indicated to the, from the recommended budget to what we are presenting to council for approval this evening. And I can pull those up. Give me one second. So we had a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 changes from the mayor's recommended budget. And real quickly, I'll go through those. The first was we made an adjustment to the projected collections from property taxes. We increased that by 280,000. Since we submitted the mayor's recommended budget, we did get the final tax numbers, and we saw a projected 9% increase in taxable property, in the taxable values of property. So we adjusted the projection of property tax revenue by 280,000. We added $100,000, $105,000 into IT for the integration of BSNA into the cloud. We added $40,000 for building, into building maintenance. And these are all within the general fund for utilities. As we started getting more information on the FY24 numbers, made an adjustment for that. We also made an adjustment for lease cost in building maintenance, primarily tied to some of our copier and printer leases. We moved a salary that I had initially put in the recommended budget into community development, just shifted that from community development to planning. So there was no budget impact on that. And then we had two adjustments within the water department where we added some of the planned projects that are expected to be grant funded for next fiscal year. A total of roughly $54 million. And we split that between federal and state sources. So those were the changes from the mayor's recommended budget to what is before council for approval tonight. Everything else has been the same.
Any other questions and audits? Comments? Come on.
Now, that is the, you know, what you got, you're selling 50 quarter mill. You said federal and state, is that money we're getting from them? Or is this money you're paying to them?
No, so we're in a process of doing a bond financing. One of the things that we utilize is, we're utilizing is the state revolving fund. And some of those monies come from the federal government, and it allows for us to have some of the loans that we get essentially be converted over into a grant. So we're getting those monies via the funding that we're doing. Some of them are federal sources, some of them are state sources. So it essentially allows us to borrow more, borrow a certain amount of money. A large portion of that will be essentially moved over as a grant, and it leaves us with a lower amount that we're, you know, actually taking out the loan and paying debt service on. Well, we're expecting approximately $54 million next year.
Like I said, fortunes of that will be.
For F. For the.
Can she star include it?
But the meters, the meters are not part of the grant. The meters are separate.
The one she just heard, I hear the rest of the grants.
Exactly.
And 4.5 is for the meters.
4.5 would be for the meters. And that's going to come out of the city's water, coming out of the city's water funds. That won't be grant funded. That will be money that will be paid out of the operating funds from the water system.
Did we ask for the hundred, where it'd be?
It's not possible. So because of the way it's funded, there's certain qualifications that have to be met from a technical standpoint. And the meters, the meters aren't a part of that.
Let's go, yes, give me.
Should have called you this morning. We could have, I should have took you to breakfast this morning. We could have sat down and.
Reference the community development plan exam, you're coming through that and what's it, what was it?
So, so I had placed a salary in, initially in the quote-unquote incorrect department. So I just moved what was already in the budget. I just moved it into another department. It was initially, I had initially placed it in community development, and I moved it into planning.
Oh, okay.
Yep. It's the same. And that's where we've been, we have been paying, I believe we have been paying it up until this point. We have been paying it out of, out of the planning budget.
Okay, and also, is this, did you, did we just acknowledge, you know, only your plan?
Yes. Oh, we probably would. Councilwoman Richardson, Carrie said 35, 35 million in grants.
45.
45 in grants and loans, and then 4.5 for the water meters. Any other comments or questions from the public? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close?
Second.
Probably move to second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have second reading of ordinance.
Case number TA24-01, consider the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the application for a zoning text amendment to allow for permitted uses in various zoning districts, including additional definitions, uses, and standards.
Move on to new business?
Consider approval of the proposed City of Inksley budget and water and sewer rates for the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. The water and sewer rates and the property millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed City of Inksley budget and water sewer rates for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Second. Probably move to second discussion.
I just wanted to clarify one point. We had put on file the proposed water rate. I did make one revision. There was essentially kind of a rounding error. The water and sewer rates, as you know, we're submitting a requested 10% increase. And so the water rate would be at $7 per unit, the sewer rate at $18.77 per unit, and the total cost, total per unit water rate beginning July 1st is being requested at a rate of $25.77. So just want to be clear initially.
The prior rate was $23.43 for the past year. So this is going up $2.34? Just so everybody knows. Thank you.
And then lastly, on the property taxes, we have submitted it. There currently are no judgments on the tax rolls. Just want to be clear that there aren't any judgments that, as they are currently submitted.
Does that spark any other questions or comments? Discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Budget passes. New business?
Consider approval of the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the application for a zoning text amendment to allow for permitted uses in various zoning districts, including additional definitions, uses, and standards.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the application for a zoning text amendment.
Second. Probably move and support it. Discussion? Did everybody understand this? I did get a call today, just want to make sure we all know what we both know. Okay, Chad, you want to explain or you want me to explain? Okay, great. As you know. Yeah, read that and let's see, then if she has any more questions, microphone.
Hey, everyone, there are council. There is a letter that was issued from City Planner Derek Dowdell on behalf of the Planning Commission, so I'll read the text before you all, for the gist of it. It says, recently a property owner inquired about permitted uses for local businesses in the local business in our district, 01. In the City of Inksley, the applicant owns property at 1183 Henry Rough, where they would like to fold alcohol beer and wine sales at the party store located on the east side of Henry Rough. And to support that, he stated that over the past couple of months, the planning department has received inquiries or applications regarding some land uses that are not currently defined in the zoning ordinance. To better serve. To better serve potential development, the city is proposing adding the following definitions to be able to serve new businesses more clearly. And there's a table that, I believe this starts on page. Or if that would be helpful, there's a zoning district update that he took from our zoning ordinance to show where the new permitted uses would be. And this would change, or B301 would allow SLU, so special land use, liquor, beer, wine, and sales, or 01, B1, B2. And that would also be inclusive of substance abuse, rehabilitation clinics, and dot daycare.
The thought behind this, just so we can try to explain. We have a couple of business districts in Inksley. Business 1, which is in the residential areas typically. B2, which are also in residential areas, but a little more dense. And B3, which is basically Michigan Avenue, busy areas, commercial areas. B1 and B2, when we did our ordinances 60 years ago, they listed the businesses that are allowed in each zone. Obviously, 60 years ago, you could anticipate what businesses would be operating now. So every time someone wants to open a business in B1 or B2 that was not listed in the ordinance, we're stuck because our ordinance is old and hasn't been updated. What this does is gives us the opportunity as the Planning Commission and the City Council to have a special land use. So someone can come to us and say, hey, I want to open up a party store of beer and wine in the B1, which is not allowed. But if council decides to give them a special land use, we can allow them to do it. That's not the motivation for changing this. It's just to give us the flexibility to decide what businesses we allow in our city. Because now it's special land, instead of it just being prohibited because the ordinance hasn't been updated for 55 or 60 years. So essentially, this does not allow the party store to open up and sell beer and wine because some, many people in that neighborhood are against that. It allows us to consider. And then we'd have to have a public hearing, we have to listen to our residents, listen to the business owners, and then we make the decision whether that's special land use, it's an appropriate use for that area.
So special land, so this would be, they would be able to do this only if one of us denied it. It means we have to have a couple of reasons to file.
Yeah, just for any special land use, you got to place on the record why you're denying it. So we would have to be intentional if we're planning to deny something to place the reasons on the record. There's different factors you look at, and we'll all go over that before we consider the next one. But we've used it before. Every time we consider a special land use, there's certain factors where you could consider it's too much of a burden on the city's resources. You know, it's different factors like that, where you could say, well, no, this is not a business or a good use for a business in this particular space.
Also, I just want to make sure if you guys get into a situation where you guys are spot on, where we're spot on.
It's, yeah. We're not, because now we're seeing, just like many of our businesses have to come for a special land use. It's no different than a lot of the businesses, they have to come before council. Typically, if it's a business that's allowed in a particular district, they don't come to the Planning Commission for a special land use or the City Council. They just do a site plan review. If the site plan's approved by the Planning Commission, they're allowed to open because it's permitted in that district. So to me, this gives us, and those businesses can still do that. Whatever is permitted, they can still do that. But for the businesses that may be more controversial or something that the public needs to speak on, it gives us the opportunity to make that decision.
Mr. Mayor, just piggybacking on what Councilwoman Rutledge was asking, with the special land use, as the mayor said, those different options that we go over, they're always in the special land use letter. So it's nine of them, and you just have to state that one for the record. And you tie it to that accordingly, if that's, you know, the direction we're moving in. So.
And what I like to do is when, once we got to get a feel where our council is at, what we want to see in the city, because we're doing our master plan now. So we're going to have a blueprint of what we want where in our city. So if a potential business owner comes and say, hey, I want to open up a strip club on Henry Rough, we know that's not, we don't want that in that particular section of town. We could express that to them from an administrative standpoint. And they can still go forward if they want to, and then we will make our decision because that's our job. But they may choose that, well, that's not what the city wants, maybe, you know, I won't choose to pursue that because it's clear from the city's plan what they want in that area.
So, so we already have the master plan coming up. Maybe we better hold off or maybe it's a decision, especially up in the world where sometimes it's a special land use or whatever it is, they have to come to us and we have to make a decision versus we put out the master plan and everything is already stated out, okay, what we're going to do.
It is, but we got two businesses now who are going through the process. We're going to be six months before we through that master plan. So we kind of, we probably need to do something. When we do our master plan, if we want to modify it, we can. And I think it's limited to, it's not any business, right? This is just the B1 and B2. It's really the B1 areas, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, B1 for liquor, beer, wine, sales, substance abuse, rehabilitation, and a lot of here.
So it's just limited to those businesses. They can get a special land use. We're going to decide in our master plan process how we want to handle zoning for their entire city and for those different areas. And we only include those because they apply because they're top. But you're right, though, and we're going to do this in the master plan process.
Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on the question you said, we got, sometimes we get petitioned by businesses. So you can't just say, oh, we're not going to approve your petition. We have to. So that's why we go through that process regardless of whatever the master plan says.
Like, is this a petition for us to change?
Yes.
Yeah, they were questioned. Over.
And then I have one other question. So in the package that I said, that this would take post after the July, second reading after the July 1st. So is it seven days after publication of the notice of your limit? Or is it?
Who do you?
Right, I'm a fact, we almost.
I'm sure it would take a month or that to get through the process. They haven't filed their application yet. So if we pass today, it will look in effect to the end of July, and we will probably see them in office. Any other thoughts or questions, if you? All right, Councilwoman Richardson?
So this B1 and B2 is residential?
Well, it's business.
Business. You mentioned residential.
Oh, you did.
Very cool. No, she's saying, what does B1 mean?
The B1 and B2, I know, but she mentioned something about residential.
I think I did. B1 is close, is basically embedded in the residential areas.
Embedded in the residential.
B2 is also, Inksley's so small, you have a business, it could be on Inksley Road, there's a house next door to it. There's a side street right there. So our B1 and B2 areas are essentially, our B3 areas is houses. They're houses on Michigan Avenue. I mean, so when you get in one of the small city, the distinction is not very much. And there's only two B1 districts in the whole city. These two, these two areas, there's only two. And then we may do away with B1 all the way around. I mean, what's the, what's the difference between B1 and B2 essentially? And we talked about that at the Planning Commission meeting, and there was different opinions, right? You know, B2 is off Middle Belt, which is a busy street. A B1 is off Henry Rough, which is a residential smaller street, but still a street that goes through the entire city. So those are the kind of discussions we'll have during the master plan process. What, how many districts do we need, and what are the rules for each district?
So this, I'm sorry, you said this is a petition by?
Two businesses.
Two businesses, and they want in a certain area to have alcohol or whatever. And you're saying according to this that we're voting on tonight, that would have to have the approval of the council?
Yes.
Instead of just going by the ordinance that we already have in effect?
Ordinance we have in effect now does not allow alcohol sales in the B1. Am I correct? Yeah, right.
Okay.
So they're, they were going to petition us to change that for them. So that's why we're dealing with this now. We just want to make sure it's, we get, the council has the final say. I don't think anybody was in favor of just allowing alcohol sales in the B1. I don't think anybody was. But they should be, if it's a business, like, let's lose, use the other business. It was a nursing home on John Daly. It's been vacant for years and years and years. Building's still standing. An adult rehabilitation center, you might decide is, you know, pretty similar to a nursing home. People stay there, they're dispersed drugs, there's inpatient treatment. What's the difference? You know, but one is allowed and one's not. Now, if you pass this, you, as the City Council, have the opportunity to say, well, yeah, I think that business would be fine in that particular area. Or, no, I don't. So you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, I guess. My thing is, between talking about people with disabilities versus alcohol.
Well, yeah, yeah, but it still gives you the say. You might say no to the alcohol, yes with the people with disabilities. You might say no to both of them, but you still get to make the call because it's a special land use. So it's not like we're just going to lie on it. Do whatever you want to do. We're just saying you have to come get approval from council. You're on City Council, so you'll get a say.
I guess I'm just really.
But like Freddie said, we're going to attack this as a whole community in the master plan process.
I understand all that. I just can't get over that we've always allowed certain businesses to come in residential because, you know, next door to me is an adult bookstore.
Yep.
And I had problems with that. And I just don't want anybody, I just don't want that coming back and our residents have to fight that. You know, that's, that's my issue because I had to fight for that.
Because at some point, they were allowed.
I know they were allowed, that's my fault.
But see, if they got to come to us, we shouldn't, as long as we're respecting the residents and listening to them, we shouldn't have that problem. Right? I'm not planning on approving nothing that residents don't want. Anybody else have any questions? Let's go ahead and take the vote. You cannot answer questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, it passes. All right. That wasn't a strong nay. That wasn't a real.
I'm not comfortable.
I get you.
I'm not comfortable.
Okay.
We got to kind of break it down to a little bit.
Okay, and let's, okay, all right. Any public participation? Do we get any slips? Come on up if you have a comment, a public comment. Please state your name because we didn't get slips tonight, so if anybody wants to come.
Okay, Sandra Wiley, Inksley resident. It's in reference to what you all just passed. And I believe I reiterated, or I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, that everybody who has the ability to vote on things doesn't necessarily have the wherewithal to do it. That's the reason you have eight marijuana facilities in this city right now and many more to come because the last council did what they were told instead of what was best for the citizens. So in these definitions that you have for this. So in these definitions that you have for this new tax amendment, do they include the council having to be responsive to the citizens? Because that's what they're supposed to be in the first place, but the last time they were not, okay? So you have people up there making decisions based on what they're told to do instead of what's right for the community. So in the definitions, do you have anything that holds you all's feet to the fire? That makes you tell us why you voted that way or what was your reasoning behind that? And rather than just saying aye.
Okay, um I agree with what you're saying. There's always a risk. But you know, I was thinking about your comment days after you made it. We can't protect ourselves from ourselves, meaning we have to think about who you're electing. And the the button you push, when you elect somebody, you're asking them to make decisions for your community, for you.
Exactly.
If you choose people who make bad decisions, your community will suffer.
People choose who they like, not who's capable.
But we need to change.
So you have to have something in place that makes them do what they're supposed to do.
There's nothing you can put in place to make a city council person consider what a resident says. We don't have to explain a reason or do any, there's no law or rule you can put in to say you have to explain why you voted gay or nay. There is none.
Can't y'all write a policy to that effect? Can't y'all? I mean, you all are the lawmakers. You're the legislature.
I mean, we can't even create standards for public officials. It's unconstitutional.
Well, the standard has already been set. It's meeting it where the problem comes in.
It's what, what a problem?
Meeting the standard.
Well, no, no, there is no standard. You have to be eighteen and live in the city for more than one year.
Talking about that. I'm talking about intelligence and.
You don't have, you may not even be able to read, write, nothing. But if you're eighteen and you live in the community for more than one year.
But that can be changed.
We cannot. It's unconstitutional. That's what I'm saying to you. You cannot. We can't say you gotta have a bachelor's degree or a associate's degree. It's unconstitutional.
Not gonna argue with you about it. I just wanna know, other than um after your first year in office, us trying to get you out of office, um is there anything that makes it possible for us to, for you to be more responsive? Because once you got that vote, you do like every other politician and you do what you wanna do instead of what you supposed to do.
You can do, always do a ballot initiative. Recall ballot initiative or wait till the next election and vote them out.
Okay.
Any other public participation?
I came in on the right time.
Yeah, I think you did.
Um so I C Williams, um I'm representing as a resident and I'm also on the planning commission. And I was the planning commissioner who voted no on this text amendment. I guess just for public comment purposes. I understand that Inkster is small and we have the B one districts. Um and one part of us wants to be flexible, but I think it's the reason we should be selective. Um and I don't like the idea of allowing this to happen in a district where it doesn't already happen. Uh just because we're trying to be flexible or saying no or yes now just to say no later. So like, we're saying, oh, no one wants another liquor store or convenience store, so we'll just say no later. Why can't we say no now? So that's, that's where I'm coming from with that. If we don't want it, we have the opportunity to not make it happen right now. And I think that's it.
I think that's a good comment, but I think you're looking at it too narrowly because you're looking at this one issue. I don't, I don't know who's gonna be so moved to want another beer and wine place in a residential area. We have plenty, as you said, at the last meeting. I'm not feeling inclined. Somebody needs to tell me something I'm missing. But it, what if it was something else? What if it was to sell wooden engines to kids? Or that was not allowed currently in the ordinance, but we say, hey, that's might be a good idea. Maybe if it was a community center which is not allowed in the ordinance, but we said, hey, I think that'd be, that's just giving us the opportunity to say, yeah. If we decide to say no, we decide to say no.
Well, these tax amendments are about the rehab center, the liquor or beer and wine, and is there another one? Or was it just those two?
It was those two businesses, I believe.
And so I would imagine that if we don't have those definitions and we wanted those in the future, like the selling the wood, then we could create that definition and vote on it then, you know, to allow it in a district. But what we're currently discussing now is the liquor, beer, and then the rehab center. And so, you know, that's what I'm speaking to now. I don't wanna say yes now just to say no later. Um when we can say no right now.
Well, I can't wait for you working on the master plan because.
Me too. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that being finished. And as you already know, one of the things that consistently comes before the planning commission is these special land uses because our ordinances need to be updated. And so I would very much like to have that as our lead, what what we're using to inform our decisions rather than doing it on the back end or after the fact. And I don't know that this is so much a uh need in the moment that we have to make that decision right now. And I know that this particular business came up with this narrative. And as you already know, I didn't agree with it, saying that they would lose business simply because they wouldn't be able to sell alcohol. We're more than just, as consumers, we want more than just alcohol and we need more than just rehab centers. And so um it's, that's what some of these businesses who come into our community think in terms of who they're selling to. And this idea that they will lose all this business simply because they wouldn't be able to offer liquor, beer, or wine is ridiculous to me. So.
But I think I trust you, your judgment. I trust these folks up here. I think we will get to it right this.
I hope so.
I hope so too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, please state your name.
Say it again.
Therese Kirkendall. And I'm just speaking on what she was just speaking on about this decision that you have just made. What was the ordinance prior to that where there was a no?
You came to sell liquor and beer, wine, and B one districts.
Okay. And you voted yes so you can make the decision to say yes or no?
But not just for that issue. These, both businesses came to us with, made a request. They were gonna petition us to modify it.
Modify the ordinance?
Correct. So we said, look, let's take it up as a city. We'll control the process and we'll look at them both at the same time. Because essentially, it's the same question, two different type of businesses, same business district. So we decided to take it up ourselves, take it to the planning commission and bring it to council.
What are the two businesses?
It's uh I guess convenience store that wants to sell beer and wine, not liquor, right? Beer and wine.
It's liquor beer.
A liquor beer and wine.
Liquor and beer, mhm.
And then the other one is for an adult rehab center.
Those are adult care centers and abuse rehabilitation center clinics. Those are the three options under that.
And what did that ordinance have to do with the rehab center?
Under the B one ordinance, it allowed for nursing homes, but it didn't allow for rehab centers. Because the ordinance is old and they did not contemplate or they decided not to put that in the ordinance way back then.
So when you voted yes, that gives you the power, all the power, right? To say yes or no to these incoming businesses that want liquor and beer in our small community.
Correct. Special land use. City council votes on special land uses regularly.
Why were they both put together? A rehab and liquor?
Oh, they're not together. They're two different businesses, two different areas.
I know they're two different businesses.
They were both requesting an amendment to the ordinance to allow additional uses that are not already mentioned in the ordinance.
Where, can you, where are they zoned that for right now? The B three?
B, adult rehab B three.
In the liquor stores and stuff like.
Big sir, B two or B three? Or, or just B three? Just B three, okay.
Didn't the no work good for years?
Uh?
The ordinance that we have now.
Did it work good? Are you happy?
Am I happy? Am I happy in reference to what?
You're asking me, did it work? That's a general question. Well, they've been around.
And that ordinance of of no, having the liquor.
Do we have a map so we can show her what we're talking about? The B one areas? It's very two, two small areas in the city of Inkster that are considered B one, very small. And these are the two areas, essentially. Henry Rough, there's only one commercial business on Henry Rough, and that's the building we're talking about.
And that's the one that's trying to put there on Henry Rough? Henry Rough and what?
Glenwood and Oakwood.
It's a zoning, you wanna take a look at it? That's one B one area, and another B one area is John Daly. It's right around the corner.
John Daly and Princeton?
Princeton. We have a plant on one corner. You know, we have a plant, and then we have that building that used to be a nursing home on the opposite corner.
And it used to be a liquor store across the street, but it's torn down.
It's torn. So the plan is M one and directly across Princeton Street is B one. We went from N one to B one because it's in a residential, I don't know if that's the reason. They're both in a residential area.
And the way the ordinance is now, he's not allowed to be there.
Who, who?
The convenience store is allowed to be there. You just can't sell liquor and beer.
Correct, correct. He can still open and be a convenience.
He can open it, but he can't sell liquor with the ordinance that y'all just told.
Correct. And if anybody wanna see the particular areas so we know what we're talking about?
It's two B ones.
John Daly and Princeton. Four corners. Yeah, basically four corners. Does that spark any additional questions?
I think.
Okay. Anybody else?
You can be getting everybody, excuse my tardiness. I had an appointment. I'm a little confused about the rehab center that you're gonna put on John Daly.
Excuse me, can you state your name for me, please?
Benola Williams. So is that supposed to be a, what kind of rehab? Because they came before the zoning board of appeals. And we denied the use because they wanted it to be a twenty-four hour drug rehab. We had community violent, uh community participation, and they wanted it to be a shelter for homeless pregnant women. And so I asked them, where in the world do those two communities meet up?
Where did that, when did that happen?
What was this?
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay, this is a different group. So there's no shelter component to it. Uh we, we haven't been presented with the business plan because this is just a text amendment. But all that will still have to come before the planning commission and the city council on a special land use application.
Okay, well, we had the church that's directly across the street there. The argument from the owner at that point was, well, it was a nursing home. Well, what's the senior citizens in wheelchairs gonna do that's gonna hurt the community? When you're talking about having a twenty-four hour rehab center where people with addictions are coming and going twenty-four hours a day? That means daytime and nighttime, smack dab in that neighborhood. We had the Princeton Street Block Club there. The church representatives were there because it's directly across the street from the church. And we denied it because it's just like, no, that's not what we want there.
I think this is different. I don't think it's a twenty-four hour people coming and going. This is an inpatient facility like uh Oakdale Recovery on Michigan Avenue.
Very well. I know what Oakdale is.
So I'd have to, we haven't got particulars on the business, but that will come before us. And then we can debate whether that makes sense for the neighborhood.
I'm very well of Oakdale. I'm very well of the population that's in Oakdale. Because working for the Department of Health and Human Services, we had quite a few clients at Oakdale. And we had issues with those clients at Oakdale and police issues in Canton with Oakdale.
That's what we'll debate if they make an application for special land use.
Okey dokey.
Yep. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Public comment is over. Anybody? Oh. Who's supposed to read this? We had a request, again, this meeting to read a comment, public comment out loud uh for someone who's not here today. So um my understanding, my city attorney told me we had to read it, so we're gonna read it again. But we are going forward. We're going to take a look at our policy. Uh because I think this is a misuse, misuse of the public comment.
Public comment coming from Charles Blackwell. Good evening. Darren Carrington and sidekick Felicia Rutledge got booted out of Pontiac City Hall for engaging in unethical behavior after Pontiac conducted a forensic financial audit. Now Mayor Byron Nolan has hired con artist Darren Carrington back into the city of Inkster, city hall to mess up Inkster finances and budget.
I, I would, I would love, I'm gonna tell you that story after we finish this meeting, why he disappeared. I gotta, gotta keep moving. We at the end. We can talk after the meeting is over. Um anybody, mayor council, any comment?
Yes. Um so one, the water rates, in lack of better words, suck. But I, because I know we were about to get a plethora of phone calls and complaints. I get them every day, whenever I get my hair cut and stuff like that, right? Um one of the things I just want to express to the community is because I had to do it myself. I had to be cognizant of how much water I was using. For instance, um the new washing machine we had bought at one particular time has auto sense of technology. And I'm just give you this as an example. I'm not telling you this is what you have to do. My water bill is like over a hundred and fifteen dollars per month. Well, it had the deep wash in, that's all it had, was deep wash to fill the whole tank up, whether you were using, I mean, whether you needed it to or not. With the auto sensing, it measures how much you need and it goes from there. After getting that, it decreased my water bill just by, you know, upgrading that one particular appliance, appliance. And then also, just simple things that we don't, we don't really take into consideration, like, oh, I gotta water my flowers. Or, oh, I'm washing my hands, I'm letting the water run as I do X, Y, and Z, letting it warm up in the shower, things like that really count. And then the fact of the matter, we have two toilets in the house, right? I was in the basement working during COVID when we were staying at home. That toilet in the basement flushed eight times by itself. And that's when I realized that the flange was bad and I didn't know it. Because I'm not home during the day when we're working and I wasn't in the basement occupying space like that. And that, I, when I changed it, that also helped decrease how much water was being used. A lot of the concerns that I get from residents, and they say, we're not using this much water, but the trend shows they are. It's just they're not cognizant until the rates go up and they realize how much money they have to expel to the city. Two other things with paying your water bills, the electronic um check portion is only a dollar fifty fee. So if you do have a problem with paying that three percent or whatever the percentage taxes, we use a credit or debit card. I would advise using that one if you can't make it to city hall because it's a flat one dollar fifty cent fee. I've told other residents about it. They said it was a convenience to them versus having to pay all those other percentages. I'm just giving you all information to share with the community. On the website. Yeah, or of course, yeah, electronic check on the website, yeah. Um I forget how it codes it in your bank account because I was like, who done hacked it? And they only took this little bit of amount, well, not a little amount, because this is the city thinks is water. But it was coded a certain way, and then I realized, I think it says like point and pay. So if you see that in there, it'd be your water bill plus a dollar fifty altogether. Also, if anybody's here tonight that wants to sign up for Code Red, I will be here and I see Miss Latoria in the back too. Um so we wanna keep pushing that. And this is the most highly attended special council meeting I've ever seen. And so I don't know if that's because you all got the alert on Code Red or if you all were just really, really, really immersed in it, and we are happy to see you. So again, um if you need to sign up for Code Red alerts, I'll do that for you after the meeting. Also, my colleagues, I had mentioned to you all about taking a group picture afterwards. I know two people are absent, but I did mention at the last meeting, so if you are able to do so directly after the meeting, just give me like thirty seconds so we can take that picture and then maybe in the future we'll take a different group picture, but tonight was the night. And. More color. Well, I gave you guys two weeks to prepare. One week, whatever. All right, and I think that's all I have.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? Do you have something?
Microphone.
Mic.
The clerk's office is gearing up for the August primary. We have started to mail out the absentee ballots. Um if you want to make sure yours was mailed out, you can call or stop at the clerk's office. If it has not, we can give, give it to you right at the office. Um early voting will start July twenty-seventh, Saturday and Sunday. Times will be eight to four, Monday to Friday, eight thirty to four thirty. And early voting is only here at city hall, and that will be for nine days. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? We're probably moving to supportive discussion. All those Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Oh, say nay. You can adjourn.